Okay, I'm not sure if Tommy's going to be here, but it's a little after four, so we'll go ahead and get started if you're okay. Go ahead and call this Board Insurance Committee meeting to order. And first item on the agenda, group health plan analysis and strategy, Ms. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Hidalgo. We do have with us our consultants with Hub International who want to share with you the initial analysis of our plan and what immediately comes to mind is possible recommendations for the future. Lynn Fontaine will present, and I also want to welcome Mark Fontenot, who's also with Hub in our Lafayette office. And he did provide you with what he's going to go over. If you would use the mic, because I think we're recording and you won't be able to hear you if you don't use the mic.
All right. Well, good afternoon. Thank you very much. A pleasure to be here and serve you guys. We have learned a great deal about your plan, your system, what's transpired in the past, and have collected information from both Blue Cross staff and all of the various vendors to put this reporting package together, which will compare our first quarter to previous years, and we went all the way back to 2010. So if you turn to Tab 1 in the first page, this gives you a summary overview of where we are financially with the plan. Starts out with participation numbers at the top. You'll see where you are from at 5,389 participants. This includes both employees and retirees in the plan. It's the number of employees and retirees, not the number of actual members in the plan, and I'll share those figures with you shortly. And then you see the Humana participation for your Medicare Advantage plan totaling at 5,590. Through the first three months, we're right at under 7,500,000, basically 3.5 million in prescription drug claims paid, for a total claims paid number of right over a million, excuse me, $11,26,812. So with the plan, the cost is derived by claims is the vast majority of it, and then we also have our fixed costs, which is comprised of reinsurance, administration fees, and all of the different fees paid to perform the services of the plan. With regard to reimbursements, this first item captures all of the reinsurance reimbursements paid. When a claim goes over a half a million dollars, to protect the financial integrity of the plan, there's reinsurance purchased for any one member's claims who exceed that half million dollar limit are reimbursed to the plan. So you have reinsurance reimbursements, any type of subrogation, any type of monies coming back to the plan to the tune of $750,719. We also have our retiree drug subsidies that are paid to the plan on a monthly basis, giving us a net claims figure. If we take that $11,260,000, subtract these two items, we are at a net paid claims figure of $10,41,000. Our fixed costs for this period is run at $792,851. Our cost for the Humana plan, $200,956. So our total planned costs for this first quarter at $11,35,078. Annualized, that number comes out to $44,140,000. And so we know where we're tracking from an annualized basis. Contributions into the plan, what funds the plan, of course, is the employee contributions, retiree contributions, but the bulk of it obviously coming from the school system here. You see those numbers totaling $12,127,48. So your net employer cost is basically just the cost of the plan less employee and retiree contributions, so that net employer cost at $7,353,133. And then the loss ratio, cost versus funding, at 91%. We're in a surplus right now of $1,085,707. So right now, we are in good shape that we're in a surplus and obviously not in a deficit. But remember, we're in the first quarter of the year. You've got deductibles, you've got months that are typically lower. Any school system, I can tell you, in my 30-plus years of doing this, is going to have higher claims in the summertime. We just seasonally do, okay? So we're keeping a good watch on this, and we'll do that on a monthly basis. If you look at the bullet at the bottom, while total claims costs have increased approximately 2.1%, net paid claims after planned reimbursements have decreased 1.4. So we had some good reimbursements to the plan in the first quarter. On this next page, in order to have a more accurate comparison, knowing that you're insuring more members and more employees, we break everything down on a per employee per month basis. Basically, your participation is up about a percent and a half, going from the 5,505 to the 5,590, not a big change there. Your medical claims are actually up 5.3%. Prescription drugs down 4.1%. Now, once again, with prescription drugs, I can tell you, don't start to feel comfortable about that decrease in prescription drugs, because in that first month, you've got, you know, the vast majority of your people are on your base plan option. That base plan option has a $100 deductible before you start paying copays. So you had a very low month in January, which is reflective of that decrease. When we actually looked at February and March, we see our prescription drug claims increasing about 6%. All of the other numbers here, when you look all the way down to the bottom, that surplus number is up about 16%, but keep in mind, we're at the first quarter. The number that I key on is the net employer cost, which is down about 7/10 of a percent. On Page 3, enrollment-wise, we always check on this type of thing. While we know the environment that we're in economically right now with different employers in the oil patch, making significant changes in their plan, their benefits far less, their costs for insurance far more, we always want to, are we having a migration of membership into the plan? Many other school systems, when we look at the number-one reason for increased cost in the plan, it's because of the influx of membership into the plan. The influx of the number of people covered is far outpacing that of the increase in the number of employees and retirees. I just shared with you that your participation number increased about 1.5%. I'm glad to tell you that your membership is not even increasing at that amount, but we're keeping a close, close watch on that. The second thing that we look at is, are we paying more for spousal claims than we are for our own employees and retirees? That has not been the picture. It is the picture in many other school systems and many other employers that have rich plans at a very low cost that invite that membership in. I can tell you, on the five-year average, your spouses are about 12.1% lower in claims costs than your own employees and retirees. In this first quarter, 33.2% less, so we're in good shape there. I was really pleased to see that tracking that way as well. When we talk about membership, and I say that membership is not outpacing your employee-retiree enrollment, 1.5% is compared, and only an 8.3% increase since 2012. So we're not insuring more people than the growth of employees or retirees. Not much to talk about on Page 5. You know you're predominantly a female employer, about an 80-20 split there. Average age has remained stable. On Page 7, once again, this is what I was talking about with your five-year averages, and you can see that we're, in this quarter, we expended $228.59 on a per-member basis for spouses as opposed to the $342.28, so we are much less in claims expense on spouses. Some of the concepts that other school systems, when they're paying a higher amount on their dependent spouses, have put in things like a dependent surcharge, in that if your dependent spouse is eligible for group insurance, where he or she works, waives that coverage to become covered under the spouse's plan, that they pay a surcharge or an increased contribution for that amount. But we do not have that problem from a claim standpoint right now. On your next page with your medical claims, you'll see that we've increased from the 438 to 461, a 5.3% increase purely from high-cost claimants. We did some statistics. 12% of your claimants, okay, are driving 78% of the cost. That's not uncommon. The rule of thumb is that 85% of the cost come from 15% of your membership. So the difference between one year and another in medical claims is highly tied to the number of large claims that we have under the plan. With regard to prescriptions, I told you, we had a 4.1% decrease in our prescription drug costs, but remember, that a large part of that is because of the $100 deductible in front of the prescription drug copays for your basic plan option. So we had really low numbers in January. February and March, on a per-employee-per-month basis, is $244. We're at $221 currently. That's about a 6.3% increase over 2015. I will tell you that one of the first things that we've done in looking at savings opportunities is we compared, knowing that you moved from Caremark last year to Blue Cross and ESI for your prescriptions, we looked at the prior contract, we looked at your current contract, and yes, there were some savings there to move to Blue Cross and ESI as far as your prescription benefit manager. We call that a PBM in our industry. But we feel that in looking at contracts and negotiating contracts, that we can bring some additional savings into the plan without having to change any benefits with regard to your prescription drugs. So the three basic components in a prescription drug contract are discounts, dispensing fees, and then thirdly, the amount of rebates paid back to the plan. When we compared your current contract to negotiated contracts that we can get into the marketplace, we saw significant room for savings there, and when I say significant, the savings are looking to be in the seven-figure range, okay? That seven-figure savings means that you don't have to go to your employees or retirees or plan members and talk about a benefit change. It's basically just a better contract, and the most of it comes from deeper discounts and higher rebates paid back to the plan. So we're in the stages of actually doing a reprice on your prescription drugs, and I think I will have some very favorable news in short order there. Total claims paid per employee per month, down 2.1%. Total plan cost on Page 11, down 1.1%. Most of that coming from significant reimbursements to the plan in the first quarter. Your five-year average, as far as net, excuse me, as far as total plan cost goes, is 2.2%. Now, I think that's something to be pretty darn proud of, because trend in healthcare costs is about 8% and has been for several years. So you are doing much, much better than trend. 2.2% increase year over year on a five-year average is very, very favorable. Your claims by benefit type, and we're talking about hospital, inpatient, outpatient services, professional, which would be your doctors, therapists, those types of providers, prescription drugs, and then a small category for other, which is durable medical equipment and things like that. You can see, if you look at the chart, that number in parentheses is the per-employee-per-month figure, which gives you an accurate comparison of what's going up and what's going down. The reason that we have a 5.3% increase in our inpatient, in our medical claims, is because we've had a 27% increase in hospital utilization. This is not a function of a number of additional admissions to the hospital, it's we've had some high-cost claimants, okay? Many of them are resolved and not ongoing. From a diagnosis standpoint, on an inpatient basis, I will say that your statistics match what we see in many other school system cases. If you look back in previous years, you're going to see circulatory and musculoskeletal right at the top, and that's very, very common for your school system. Y'all have done a fantastic job with implementing wellness measures into your plan, and those are the two diagnostic categories that could have a very positive effect with wellness, especially the circulatory category. If we can prevent a heart surgery through wellness measures and preventative medication and things like that, it's certainly going to bode well for us with regard to your claims numbers here on the medical side. Outpatient, been kind of different. Neoplasma, which is cancer, has been a high, high category for your plan, higher than what we see is common, but we are in the absence right now of the kind of dollars. These claims dollars captured in your first quarter, most of them were incurred in the prior plan year, okay? Remember that there's always some lag in claims reporting, because the date the claim was incurred and the date that the claim is actually billed, processed, and paid does have some lag to it. On a top facility category, all in-network providers. Most of them here locally, Tulane was a function of a very high-cost claimant that had an organ transplant, reasoning behind that. The reason that you are currently with Blue Cross and probably have been with Blue Cross for quite some time, predominant reason is the network, okay? When we talk about the fixed cost of your plan administratively, they are competitive, and there's not a big cost differential between administrative cost of one carrier versus another, another third-party administrator to process those claims. But when we talk about the breadth and scope of your network, but more importantly, how deep are those discounts? 68.5% discount average is much higher than any competing carrier TPA can offer right now. And when I say much higher, to the tune of probably 8% to 10%. If we added 8% to 10% to the medical claims of your plan, we would not be in a surplus standpoint right now. Also on top of that, if you see where we have tracked from a network utilization on Page 17, you'll see that the vast, vast majority of your claims are all paid in network and capturing that high discount. We've dropped down to 96.2% in this first quarter because of a high-cost claimant, and we're investigating that as we speak. On your next page, I am pleased to tell you that you have the highest percentage for any municipality that I've reported in the last year when it comes to generic prescription drug utilization. 85% is phenomenal, especially for a group that covers retirees. As you age and your medication becomes more specific to different disease states, you find more brand-name utilization, but 85% is phenomenal. Very, very good job, great education out to your employees. Even though we're utilizing generic drugs 85% of the time, it only represents, you see on the next page, 27% of the total cost of the plan. So that tells you how large the difference is between generic medications and that of brand name. One other thing that I'll interject here, as far as if we saw any area with regard to recommendations on benefits, and I'll use what we call deductible leveraging as an example. If a procedure 10 years ago cost $10,000, and today that procedure is $20,000, and you have not changed the deductible or the out-of-pocket of the plan, who is paying the difference? The plan member or the plan? Obviously, in this example, it's the plan. The plan's paying double what it did 10 years ago. So with regard to prescription drugs, we know that every case out there has gone from 65%, 70% generic utilization years ago to pushing anywhere from 75% to 85%. 85% is at the top, 85% generic utilization. But when you talk about your copay structure for prescription drugs, remember that many of the generic medications, the plan never paid a dime on. Why? Because the cost of that generic medication was less than the generic copayment. Now, with the 15% on an annual basis increase in the cost of these generic drugs, the plan is now paying more, or dollars, on these claims than it wasn't before. That has an impact on this increase in prescription drugs. So when you talk about benefit changes, it's much less impactful to increase a copay by $5 than it is to increase a deductible by $200, $300, $500, or an out-of-pocket maximum by several hundred dollars. People would, your plan members, nobody likes change, but a $5 change is much more easier to handle financially than that of a deductible or out-of-pocket change. So we're going to be modeling some copay structures for your prescription drugs. I know you brought in a fourth tier last year for specialty medications, but that only affects a very, very small percentage of your medications, knowing that 85% of them are generic medications. So if we can get a substantial savings on that, what we try to do when we look at benefit alternatives is, where can we get the most savings for the least amount of pain or disruption from a member standpoint? Your prescription drug utilization actually dropped 2/10 of a percent on a per-employee-per-month basis, on a per-member basis, 1/10 of a percent. That's good news. Top 10 drugs by dollar amount. This is part of what we're faced with here. Each and every year, and each and every week, month, we hear about new medications coming out in the marketplace, and these medications can actually put certain disease states into remission. One of them is for hepatitis C. There's medications out there now that take hepatitis C and put it in remission. Those medications are $30,000 a month, okay? You do not take them indefinitely. The usual course is a three-month treatment. Long-term, very cost-effective, because putting that hepatitis C in remission is certainly a lot more cost-effective than a liver transplant, okay? Which you might get to eventually with hepatitis C. It's been, it's a disease state that has some very, very high-cost claims to it. So you're going to see some of this incorporated into your claims experience. You see this Harvoni is the top drug in this period. It's a new drug, but it is to treat that hepatitis C. Other drugs here, Crestor, obviously, cholesterol medication and highly utilized, but your Embrils and Humiras are predominantly used for rheumatoid arthritis. With your group and the demographics of it, you're going to see some utilization there. Those medications are in excess of $3,500, $3,600 a month, okay? So these high-cost medications certainly have a big factor on it. We went from a per-employee-per-month number in 2015 of 4110 to 4418 in this quarter, predominantly because of the introduction of that hepatitis C medication. In your top 10 drugs by number of prescriptions, all the items here are what you would expect them to be, high blood pressure, antibiotics, things like that. The one drug that has had conversation on this report in several years has been the use of hydrocodone, which is a pain medication. Very highly prescribed, in some cases, opinions say over-prescribed. About a year ago, they re-classed this particular medication. You can no longer get a 90-day supply. They've re-classed it to only allow for a 30-day supply, and we've had about a 10% drop in utilization of that medication. And on Page 23, you will see that many, I guess, you'll talk about Medicare, and you've heard Medicare boast of how they are running Medicare and Medicaid very lean as far as cost goes. When you look at the fixed cost of your plan, and you're running your plan for less than $0.07 on a dollar, if you were fully insured, the cost of running your plan would be in excess of $0.20 on a dollar, okay? So the hard cost of running your plan is basically way less, and about 7%, $0.07 on a dollar, okay? What is in the hard cost of running your plan? Administration fees that you paid to Blue Cross, reinsurance, that's the big part of it. There's some other ancillary fees from different service providers that do your Medicare Part D subsidy, things like that, but from a total fixed cost standpoint, 6.8% is phenomenal. So with all of that being said, I can tell you, the long and short of it is, is we are in good posture for the first quarter. We do have a surplus, but I can tell you, one or two bad months can make that surplus disappear. So we have to keep a close watch on it. We have to be very vigilant with regard to, are all of the different service components performing to absolute optimum level? And are we getting these different service components at the best rate we can possibly get? That's where the first thing that we really looked at with the prescription drugs, knowing that we went from CVS to ESI Blue on your pharmacy benefit management. We've done a lot of work in comparing those contracts and really getting down to the nth detail, and I'm very excited about what we found thus far. And if we can come back in short order with some very significant savings that do not affect your benefits, okay? That do not have a difficult transition, because what we negotiate into these contracts That do not have a difficult transition because what we negotiate into these contracts is to grandfather the formulary. It's very easy to cut the cost of prescription drugs if we utilize a brand-name formulary whereby members are going to find out when they go to the drugstore that they can't take this medication anymore because it's not covered under the plan. We could restrict the formulary, okay? And there would be a line out the door from here to the next town, okay? But in doing this, what we're really comparing is can we maximize or increase the discounts that we're getting for our prescription drugs? Can we maximize or increase the rebates that are coming back to the plan on our brand-name medications? And if those two components produce a seven-figure savings, it's a win-win situation because a member is not going to be affected. If we can couple that with some small tweaks on our co-pays, okay? We don't have to be in a situation where we have to have a large increase in contribution or a cut in benefits. Because those are, you know, when we talk about cutting planned costs, those are the, obviously, the go-to measures that most folks will use to cut the cost of the plan is to decrease the benefits or to increase monies coming in. So that's where we are at this particular time. I can tell you, for a plan that's averaged two-point-two percent, you're not in bad shape. For a plan with this many members to, and what's going on in your economy, to not see this huge influx of membership really calmed us down greatly. That was the first thing I looked for, okay? And I didn't, I wanted to make certain that we were not going to be victims of, you know, folks that are getting laid off or coming into the plan or just seeing a membership far-outpacing your increase in employees and retirees. But there is room for improvement in our prescription drug contract that doesn't have to affect your benefit structure. There is room for improvement in some of the benefits. When you look at what you did as far as benefit changes last year, and if you remember, the changes brought you from what we call a grandfathered status to a non-grandfathered status, okay? When you go from grandfathered status to non-grandfathered status, basically, all out-of-pocket costs from the member accumulate to an out-of-pocket, okay? So if we just take a look at your basic plan where the majority of your folks participate, okay? You had a $950 deductible, a $4,000 out-of-pocket. You combined the two, okay? And that's $4,950. Now your out-of-pocket's $4,950, so same thing. But, okay, and this is strong, that doesn't account for now all of the co-pays that are accumulating to the out-of-pocket. So many members around the plan are of the mindset that, wow, they increased the out-of-pocket on me, okay? Because the out-of-pocket was four thousand, now it's forty-nine-hundred-and-fifty. Actually, your benefits are superior now to what they were last year because all of these co-payments. So you talk about a plan member that is on ten different medications. Is that uncommon in your group? No, it is not, okay? You have, you have a number of higher-aged plan members that are on multiple medications, and it's very easy for them to reach or meet that out-of-pocket much easier now than it was before. So we have to take in that in account and make certain that we don't see our claims picture creep up because of actually making an increase in benefits and need to address that, okay? So the consensus in the summary is, we do have savings measures to bring into the plan and incorporate that will not affect benefits. There are benefit measures that will not be that painful to our plan members, but we have to keep a close watch. Because even though we're in a surplus measure, I've seen cases, school system cases your size, that go from surplus to deficit in a few months, okay? So we want to make certain that we stay on top of it so we can be proactive rather than reactive, okay? Any questions?
A really good, a generic percentage. What are we doing right?
So not being here before, I can tell you, that is usually a function of education and whatever measures you've done in the past, but a lot of the function of that are all of these new medications that come off of patent. So what happens is when a pharmaceutical company develops a drug, they have a patent, ten, fifteen-year patent. When that patent expires, other companies can make that drug in generic form. The FDA says it has to be the same thing, chemically make up same thing. So the differences might be the coding of the medication or different things like that. So as the industry, all of these blockbuster medications have come off of their patent, that has an increase. And then your doctors are just more readily prescribing the generic medications, but we're also living in a day and age when that doctor pulls the prescription pad out, people are asking. I know I do it every time my kids go to the doctor for something as simple as a sinus infection. He writes a brand-name medication for an antibiotic, okay? And this is for a sore throat. And luckily, I went to high school with him, so a five-minute phone call takes my, I have a high deductible health plan, so I see the cost of the medication. I'm not paying a co-pay. So that hundred-and-sixty, hundred-and-seventy-dollar payment for the brand-name medication after the five-minute phone call, and I'm standing at the desk at Walgreens in Homa, and it goes from a hundred-and-seventy bucks to eight dollars, okay? That's what makes the big difference. So it's those three components. It's the change in industry and so many of these medications coming off of patent, practices from the medical community whereby doctors are more readily prescribing, but it's also coming from an educated population.
And I have to agree with you on that. My wife went to the doctor, she has tendonitis in a joint, her ankle, and took out the prescription pad, wrote it up, brought it in. So she asked, how much was it? So it was $2,000 for two weeks. It's a thousand dollars a week. So she went online, looked and said what the components were. Well, it was Advil, a strong, no, it's a strong motion, Motrin or a strong Advil along with a stomach medicine to kind of calm it down. So she says, well, you know, this is way too much. Went back, they called the doctor, prescribed her two different medications, and we paid $10.
That's a perfect example. Also, compound medications, okay? That's been a big area that the industry has addressed. Basically, you take two or three low-cost medications, make an ointment of some kind, most of it for pain, and the difference is these medications can cost twenty, thirty thousand dollars for a month's supply. So we make sure that you have the proper pre-authorizations and the proper checks and balances in your pharmacy plan, in your pharmacy contract to make certain that nobody gets those medications unless it's absolutely medically necessary. There are times when it will be, okay? But they're very, very rare. You also have a service in your plan whereby your prescription drug data is scrubbed on a monthly basis, and in that scrubbing, they identify medications that are eligible for a lower-cost alternative. The doctor's contacted. If the doctor agrees to that switch, then the member is contacted. If the member agrees to that switch, then the switch is made to the lower-cost alternative.
You were right about that, and it's the education of the members that needs to be done. Because it's like, for example, I can get drugs off of Walmart cheaper than I can if I run it through the drug company here that we have now.
And there's so many different educational opportunities. If a plan member is on a maintenance medication, okay? And let's say that the doctor wants to change that maintenance medication. Sometimes you take two or three of them before you find the one that works. How much cost and how much waste is involved in that, okay? So we educate the member to ask for a sample, okay? Or ask for a two-week supply. Find out if it works and it agrees with you before you get ninety-day, a ninety-day supply of it, okay? So all of this is part of the member education, but when you see eighty-five percent, somebody's doing something right because that is not a common percentage, especially not in a case that has the average age, that covers retirees, and the demographics that surrounds your plan, okay? Any other questions?
I do have a question. Mr. Fontaine, on page one, the plan reimbursements seem to be running significantly higher than they have for the last two years and certainly in the four years prior. What are we doing differently this year that we were not doing, if anything?
Absolutely nothing. It's an anomaly in that you had a very high reimbursement from your reinsurance that came in in that period. Three-hundred-and-nine-thousand-and-sixty-four, six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars of reinsurance reimbursement, performance guarantee from your prior contract with Caremark whereby they paid two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars back to us, and then rebates came in of two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. So you will level back out to your previous figures, but it was just a high period of reimbursement to the plan.
Okay. And then on page eight at the bottom, in the footnote, it says, if I can get to page eight, there are fifty-eight members with paid claims greater than $25,000 totaling three-point-nine-two-one million dollars, or thirty-five percent of the total paid claims. Can you give me an example, a few examples of the types of claims that are costing so much money?
Your two top were a liver transplant and a premature baby. Those are, when you talk about your retention or where that deductible is set, half a million dollars is a significant claim. So many cancer treatments and heart surgeries and things like that, not going to hit a half a million dollars. What's going to hit a half a million dollars is in some cases, end-stage renal disease is one that can hit that, if we have a very strict course or intense course of dialysis, because dialysis is not a significantly discounted type of service, preemie babies and organ transplants.
So I guess what I was driving at was, if there are anything that any of those items, and I guess possibly, possibly a liver transplant, but would be impacted by a better-informed employee base on the wellness program and different wellness activities that we could put into place that obviously wouldn't take care of this next year, but going down the road.
In addition to the measures that you've taken with your wellness, and when you look at that, and your incentive is to, if you do all of the necessary items to reach your target in your wellness, you get a credit off of your deductible, okay? And we want to make certain that when we look into that, it's just not your high-cost claimants that are just saying, let me do this so I can get a deductible decrease. So we want to make sure we're getting larger and larger participation into wellness every year. As a wellness plan matures, right now, you're in the participation phase of your wellness plan. You are trying to increase participation. Once your participation gets to the levels where you want it to be, a wellness plan matures into what we call an outcomes base. So if we think about the evolution of a wellness plan, the first thing that we want done is for everybody to go and have, be screened, okay? Because you have plan members that don't go to the doctor, don't get a checkup, and instead of the first time they access healthcare, it's a physical, it's through the doors of emergency room and onto an operating table. So that's what we're trying to preclude. If we know that eighty-five percent of your claims are coming from fifteen percent of your membership, we want to shrink that fifteen percent. So getting these folks to participate is the beginning phase of it, and where it matures to is if you're identified, okay? And of course, all of this is confidential, but if you're identified with having, let's say, high blood pressure, diabetes, anything like that, and you choose to do nothing about it, okay? You're not going to get those points anymore. So to get points now, you have to participate. To get points in the future, you're going to have to be compliant because the difference between a compliant diabetic and a non-compliant diabetic is tens of thousands of dollars in claims cost on an annual basis, okay? So you do that, you move down the continuum and mature towards that on your wellness. Also, you look at where are our biggest opportunities in different disease states? Let's say diabetes, and in any school system, diabetes is, especially in South Louisiana, very, very prevalent. It makes sense to, in these diabetes programs, to incentivize the compliance, i.e. pay for the test strips and pay for the monitors and things like this to keep them compliant, if they're compliant, okay? And on the other side, if you're not, drop the benefit there.
Thank you.
I think one of the things I've learned through this whole process with the past year or so is that many of the participants think it's too inconvenient to do the wellness, participate in the wellness program. How do we, as a system, implement a more strict wellness program? In other words, provide more benefit for participating, but without, you know, you know, without affecting the results that you shared with us tonight?
Okay. In a wellness plan, if there are no incentives, okay? And when I say incentives, they've got to be financial, okay? If there are no incentives and you do a health fair, the people that show up are the people that run five miles a day and eat kale, okay? That's who shows up. So when you start with an incentive like you have right now, you're going to encourage that participation, okay? So you've already taken those measures. The incentive can either be a carrot or a stick or a combination, okay? Right now, you have a carrot, in that if you do what you're supposed to do with regard to wellness, you get a credit off of your deductible, okay? In future years, and I would be remiss if I told you that the cost of your plan is not going to increase in future years because the cost of healthcare is increasing, and we're going to do our absolute best to control that cost curve. If the cost curve has been running at eight, nine percent for the last several years and you're averaging two-point-two percent, we're not in bad shape right now comparatively, but we still, you know, we're still talking about a school system with limited dollars and budgets and all of this type of thing, so we have to do our absolute best to make it even better. So in future years, you can always look to, there's a cost increase, but the cost increase is either not there or less for those people that have participated. So basically, you look at that strategy and you use that carrot or stick to increase that population. On top of that, just to what we were just talking about, if in fact that diabetic chooses to be non-compliant, why would they have the same benefit level as your plan member who's doing everything they can do, who's gone to get diabetes education, who's gone through a diabetes education program every other year? Because the industry changes and there's more information to manage diabetes, okay? Because the industry changes and there's more information to manage diabetes, okay? Those are the kind, you do it by way of benefit and contribution. And you just make sure that you're maximizing your, um, participation and maximizing the outcome. Because participation's great, but if the lifestyle doesn't change, the car, the circulatory claims aren't coming down, the musculoskeletal's not coming down, the diabetes isn't coming down. People have to make a change to affect their lifestyle to affect the claims cost of the plan. All right?
In January, we did put into place a program with Blue Cross that Lynn is probably familiar with, a diabetes prevention and education program. So on the wellness portal this year, when people go online, employees go online to do their, uh, personal health assessment, there'll be a little box to check if they're interested in answering a few, a handful of questions about their, themselves. It might even include, I haven't taken the quiz, although I will. Um, and if, if they qualify, if their, their, um, numbers and their, based on how they answer the questions, they can be, they'll be offered to be enrolled in a diabetes, I call it prevention plan, but it's an education program. They will be provided a scale, a wireless scale at no cost. It's all part of the subscription fee to the plan. And they're given a lot of information, they're enrolled in a group of people that are participating in the program for support and talk to back and forth, they're help, they're nutrition, educated about nutrition and all sorts of things. It's a great program. We're just now really getting, pushing it out. So I hope that everybody will take that little quiz and it'll help us manage that particular disease state. You probably agree with that.
Absolutely.
And, and we're looking forward to getting the statistics and the reports from that and then build on top of that um, with the value-based and benefit structures that I've, I've shared with you. For example, one of the other school systems partnered with a local hospital, uh, to provide diabetes education. So what they did is, um, they utilize a monitor that on a real-time basis tells you everything that's going on with your blood sugar and your diabetes. Um, that monitor is provided to the plan member at no cost if they, and their strips and, um, all of the, uh, things to maintain, their diabetes are paid for at a hundred percent on the, on a generic, uh, uh, basis. But all of that is a big, big incentive for a diabetic because it cuts their costs tremendously. But they have to go through that, that diabetic education. It's a certified diabetic education program. And we saw the numbers on diabetes in that particular case plummet. Diabetes, if not managed, just immediately produces claims costs. Because it's got so many other comorbidities and, and sicknesses or illnesses or disease states tied to it. That's the low-hanging fruit disease that, that you can, uh, affect costs with. Wellness is also going to have a positive effect on circulatory, obviously. But when you think about musculoskeletal, if, um, your, uh, folks that are overweight or obese, uh, change their lifestyle and lose weight, obviously that is a positive effect on their knees, hips and back.
All right, thank you. Do you, um, have any recommendations or anything else for us this evening?
Not at this particular time, but we will be back to, um, administration shortly. And I think you'll be significantly pleased with what we, uh, uh, are negotiating on the pharmacy side. Um, and, uh, in short order, we'll be looking at plan cost and rate structure and all of those types of things for your, um, upcoming open enrollment.
Well, thank you for your time. If there are no further questions or comments, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda.
Should we expect that next quarter? Like another end-of-quarter update, those kinds of improvements to the prescription and?
I should, uh, be presenting, um, the pharmacy, uh, results probably in about a week and a half, two weeks. So it'd be well before the, the next committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, two point two, four oh three B plan structure. I'll ask, uh, Matt Dugout to come forward, uh, Mr. Centani and, uh, yeah, go ahead. Speaks low, he's got to go to the restroom. Yeah, we'll just, uh, take a two-minute recess. You got two minutes, Centani. About many of the different financial aspects of the school system, the four oh three B plan came up. And we learned that, um, as if four oh three Bs itself are not a complex issue, um, the system we have in place is a very, very complex, um, process. So I'm going to ask Mr. Dugout to shed a little bit of light, give a little bit of history on the plan. Mr. Dugout, we have about twenty-five minutes left, so, um, I'm sure that's plenty of time, but I just wanted to notify you. We have another important committee meeting after this. So if you can please give us a rundown of where we started, kind of where we've been through, you know, and where we are today and, and some of the ideas. I did ask Mr. Dugout to come up with recommendations. Uh, we do have a consultant that Ms. Bernard and Mr. Dugout have been, uh, meeting with to come up with different recommendations on a better way to facilitate this plan, and, uh, he's got some information for us.
Yeah, so basically, um, I'll start with kind of defining for those of you who know what a four oh three B plan is. A four oh three B plan is a tax-deferred retirement account for employees of certain exempt entities, including school systems. Uh, they were established in the nineteen fifties, um, and they actually predate the 401K plan. They're actually considered the precursor of today's 401K plan. They were around about thirty years before the government decided this might be a good idea for other employees other than government employees. So the four oh three B plan has actually been around for a very long time since the fifties. Um, however, unlike today's 401K plans, the four oh three Bs started as more of a personal supplemental pension plan. And when I say that, it was, uh, by design, it was, it was designed to have very little involvement from the employer. Uh, it was voluntary deduction that was requested by the employee and deducted from the employee's check just to accommodate the point that it was not being taxed. So basically, it was a voluntary deduction. We accommodated that as a school system as, as requested by the employees, and that was pretty much in the beginning, all that we did as an employer. Um, the employee education plan, the design, the investment choices, the compliance with IRS regulations were all managed by the vendor. There was no real involvement or responsibility by the employer, by the school system at all. So that's basically how this plan started. Uh, multiple vendors were allowed to sell their four oh three B products to, uh, school system employees. Um, if you could sell one employee, you were given a payroll deduction. And we sent the money to your company at the end of the month. So that's for years, basically, that's how it worked. Then in the nineteen nineties, the IRS realized that many of the companies selling these products were, were more focused on the sales than, um, not as much on compliance. So, um, they, uh, looked into it and what they saw was resulting in a massive non-compliance with IRS regulations in the four oh three B business. And, um, so they started looking around on how to solve that and, and, so they began putting, uh, more responsibility on the employer every year. A little bit more responsibility on the employer, a little bit more responsibility on the floor, employer. Until two thousand and ten, they basically said, guess what employer, you're a total responsible for this plan. Um, you, like, it's almost like a 401K plan, you can be held accountable for all IRS compliance. Um, we had to adopt a written plan document. We became responsible for record-keeping and compliance coordination, including approving loans, transfers between products. So basically, we had a backdoor 401K product kind of thrust it on us by the IRS. And we had a bunch of vendors who were selling products that, um, we weren't exactly sure what it was. And we weren't exactly sure the quality of that product. They had kind of come in through a whole different premise than if this would have been a 401K. We would have gone out with a process of finding the best price, the best product for the employee. Then, so as the IRS increased the scrutiny of these plans, we hired as, as LPSS TSA, uh, consulting to come in and monitor compliance with the regulations, um, and engage them to be administrative of the plan when the, once the IRS complete, uh, completely shifted all responsibility to us. So, you know, those of y'all who have four oh three B plans, you can make loans against them. Uh, somebody has to monitor all that. You, you have these maximum, um, amounts you can contribute that's dependent on your age, the amount of money you make when you started. Um, a whole bunch of things, so every year you have to monitor that. And they monitor that for us and tell us in basic October if they think somebody's going to go over. And we warn them or we cut their deduction off because that's happened in the past when somebody's over-contributed. They get a ten ninety-nine and it's really messy for their tax return and it's messy for us. They're not happy, we're not happy. We want to avoid that. So TSA's been doing that for us about four or five years. Um, so basically, currently, we have a four oh three B plan that we are totally responsible for with, um, nine remaining inherited vendors that were allowed in the program without a vetting process of what they're selling or how much control over the, we don't have any really control over vendor product or the fees they charge. Participation in the program is very low. It's about fifteen percent or seven hundred employees, um, at this point. So, um, so basically, um, where's ten providers, actually nine providers. Most of our providers are annuity products, which is the first section, and then the second section. Is that up on the screen? There we go. So basically, um, our ten providers, um, are, are here and we have, uh, really, our only, uh, low-cost provider is Fidelity. There are no load, uh, self-service, in that, their one eight hundred number kind of thing for four oh three Bs. We added that actually, um, on our own to provide another option to employees for somebody who had, um, maybe a business teacher or a math teacher who had a lot of investment sense or was maybe married to an investment, uh, provider that wanted to go with a cheaper alternative. Uh, we added Fidelity as another choice to try to, to try to get to that.
Mr. Dugout, can you make that full screen, please? A little tab on the bottom, over to the right.
Okay, so in an effort to improve this situation and to kind of get our hands around this, um, we asked TSR, TSA, our current four oh three B, uh, consultant to review our current plan and to make some recommendations on changes that, uh, might improve the situation. And, uh, we actually just got this, I think, last week. Um, so here's our current participation broken down by existing plans and providers. As you can see on the left is the current participation. We have seven hundred people participating. And enrollment since two thousand and fourteen has gone from three hundred to seven hundred. So we have had quite a bit of increase and you can see we have MetLife only has two participants right now. By far, the highest participant is Horseman followed by National Life Group. Um, but that's how they, they, they spread out. Here's the fee structure, and this, this is what we really had difficulty, um, getting our hands around. And I think TSA did a really good job of putting this in a recap of what they're charging for different, uh, products. As you can see, uh, if you go, you have some of your more expensive products like security benefit. If you add the M and E fee of point eight five percent to the two point two, they're paying almost three percent. And you, anybody who knows what you can get in the investment world, that's almost at a loss. I mean, it's hard to get one to two percent right now in anything, and these, the fees on this particular thing is three percent. So you're already at a negative in that particular, um, particular, um, investment. Fidelity, um, that's our cheap one. It's, it's anywhere from a half a percent to one point oh one percent, depending on which mutual fund you pick. Um, the rest of them have, have, um, are pretty much annuities. So you have, you know, these, I mean, all these fees are basically either fees to pay the salesperson or to pay the, the fund to, uh, invest the money for you. And they range anywhere from point five to almost three percent in, in the range of stuff. So this was kind of eye-opening to us in that, um, these prices are basically retail prices. And I think a size, our employees, the size of our, our employees, we should be getting, uh, institutional prices, wholesale prices. In essence, we've been shopping at a convenience store when we want to shop at Costco or Sam's. So one solution that came about, let me go to the next slide. This is the balances. So this is the number of participants and the vendors. As you can see under, um, in our four oh three O P program, even with only seven hundred participants participating right now, we have over thirty-four million dollars in that program. So any, any amount we can save, multiply time, this, this kind of money can, can be really helpful to the employees. Uh, one solution that was proposed by TSA when we were, you know, asking, you know, what can we do? How can we make this better? Um, is to offer a, um, to take all these people and put them on one platform. And once you get them on, them on one platform, you can control what they sell, you can control their fees, you can force them to bring the fees down. Um, you know, so fees could be reduced, um, with this, with this one single platform. Uh, we, we'd have institutional pricing versus retail pricing, which would be good. Um, we would have more control over what was sold. We could limit the number of providers. Obviously, we maybe don't want a provider that only has two employees because that's one person in the teacher's lounge you don't need to see. So, um, and one pro is that employees could continue using their current products, you can continue using their current vendors. Um, some of the cons on that, we would still have multiple vendors in the schools, multiple people hanging, hanging around the teacher's lounges, um, taking teachers' time on their breaks. We would still need a TPA to manage, we'd still need TSA to manage the, the program for us. Uh, we would lose economies of scale negotiating lower fees a bit because, um, because of spreading out the business. Obviously, if you put all the business in one pot, they'll give you a better price because they get everything. Rather than little, having nine people share the profits, um, they can give you an economy of scale. And we also would not have a core coordinated, um, education and sales effort. Our, our participation's about fifteen percent, most districts are more like fifty percent. So we are extremely low, and I think that's reflective of people looking at what we're providing. And it's just, it's not a, a good product perhaps for some people. Um, another solution would be to do an RFP and convert our plan to a single vendor, much like a 401K plan and offered through, um, that was offered through private employers. So today, if you came to the school system and you said, I want to come in, I want to put this supplemental retirement system, we're not going to say, we're just going to let anybody come in and sell whatever they want. We would never do that. We were going to come out and we'd say, we're going to take, um, this opportunity to do an RFP, see what's out there, take our substantial size, whittle down the fees as much as we can, get the best deal we can for the employees and come back and, um, present that as an option in a, in a one-type store. If, if, if this program wouldn't have developed the history that I, how this program kind of developed where these, these vendors kind of came in, in, in another, in another world in essence, and then all of a sudden, the IRS flipped the world on us and it's now our plan. An RFP should result in lower fees for employees, um, once subjected to comprehensive, competitive process. And we could probably get institutional pricing over, versus the retail pricing we're getting now. Uh, the economies of scale provided with one vendor should allow vendors to be more aggressive in pricing due to the increased volume. Um, using one vendor works for LPS would allow a coordinated, coordinated education effort, more accountability of the sales staff and greater levels of participation as things will, would result in that. We wouldn't need the, the cost of a TPA to manage the plan because once you get one vendor, they will do that for you for free. Um, an increase, an increase in the variety of investments available and the quality of service to provider. So we're thinking, using one vendor, we can really get a hundred or two hundred percent increase in the quality of the service and probably, uh, substantial decrease in cost. Uh, sales effort would be concentrated to one vendor at one time rather than nine different vendors approaching staff at different times with different products. vendors approaching staff at different times, with different products. A con of this is that, you know, employees would, currently participating in the current 403B plan, with the current 403 vendors, would need to change from the vendors that they're accustomed to. So, that would be a negative to that. So, the, I think that was, I was gonna change. So, due to the complexity of such an RFP, and the need to know the industry, to properly recap the results, we would need help in putting that RFP together. Mona and I has tried, and believe me, as soon as the word got out in the industry, our phone was ringing off the hooks, and we had people offering us, you know, but these things have front loads, they have back loads, they have all these fees, that unless you're in the business, and you know the lingo, and you know where to look, it's hard to tell what they're exactly, they're selling, 'cause there's so many places they can hide stuff, in the way that the industry's structured, kinda like the rebates in the pharmacy, is similar to that. So, we would ask that person, that RFP person, to come in and put the RFP together, and then to come back and recap the fees, go in there and really take everything apart, and come back and show us what the fees truly are, from a third party, that represents LPSS, represents us, and the interest of the system, and the employees, and the board. I think that needs to come from an independent party, who is working only for the interest of the school system, and only for the interest of the employees, and must agree not to respond to the RFP, obviously. We have contacted Argent Trust, who is our current trustee on almost all of our debt. They have experiences, experience in doing this, and they have agreed not to respond to the RFP. So, currently, these people, they're out of Ruston, they're in Louisiana, and their prices are so good, and their service is so good, that basically, they handle all our, the school board's debt, in, as our trustees. So, they were, I think, a good fit, 'cause we already have a relationship with them, and we know they're, they're good people. They were gonna be here today, but there was a little mix-up in the date. I thought this was gonna be tomorrow, and they were actually scheduled to be here tomorrow, and they couldn't make it today. So, basically, they're not here today, but they have agreed to do that for a flat fee of $8,000. We think that this has the possibility of saving, and they backed me up on this estimate, $250,000 a year in fees for employees. And if you divide that by 700 people, that's $360 a year in your investment account you would not have, if we would not go through this process. So, I think it's something we definitely wanna look at, and I think it's something we definitely wanna look at pretty quickly, 'cause that estimate of 250 might be a little low. Plus, we would get much better education, much better participation, and 250,000, that's a quarter of a million dollars, that's only in one year. You do that time value of money and your investments, and, you know, the employees would be much better off.
Is there, 'cause there could be a one amount that they're gonna have to pay to get out of that? Like, you know, of course, some of these are front-loaded, some are back-loaded.
Right. No, you would have, you would have the opportunity, what would happen, as I understand it, is that you would stop making contributions to that current 403B plan. But basically, it would be your choice to roll over what portion has come out of your five-year, whatever the period that you have to surrender period. So, you may have 10 years' worth of contributions, five years you might be able to move right away, and five you'd wanna keep. So, it would be kind of your personal decision to move that money, and if you wanted to move that money.
That needs to be told to the people who are doing that, so that they don't wind up, like, "Only half my money's here."
Right, and part of that would be, in the education process, you would sit with a person, and they would go through that and say, "Look, I really think you should only move 10,000 and keep 10,000 in, because it's gonna cost you too much to take it out."
If a person likes the company, do they have an option of maintaining that relationship? Or would they have to change?
They have the option of maintaining the relationship, just not adding to it. Because you really wanna do a one-stop shop, and, you know, when you look at some of these fees, you know, really, should they be continuing that, from their perspective? And we're hoping that, you know, that we get some, we'll get much better service and accountability. And I can tell you a story. I was called down about a month ago to payroll at 8:00 in the morning. There was a hysterical teacher, who had, the previous afternoon, with one of these vendors, and was told a whole bunch of incorrect stuff. And he, she, that salesperson had convinced this woman that she was gonna take $1,000 out of her check per month, and she felt kinda bad about that, so after, went back to him and said, "I'd like to bring that down to 200." He said, "No, it's too late," and walked out, with the paperwork sitting in his folder. So, she got home, and her husband was not too happy, and she showed up, she literally had not slept all night. She showed up at 8:00 in the morning, hysterical, and I took her deduction thing, and I said, I tore it up in front of her. I said, "That is absolutely wrong." I gave her the name of the salesman's boss, I called the boss and complained, I gave the teacher the name of the, and the phone number of the boss, she called and complained. So, you know, we've had some quality issues, we've had some he-said, she-said issues. You have a lot of these people, that, you know, they're salesmen, they come in, and they say, "Oh, I'm gonna give you fixed rate, 5% forever," and then they get the product, and it's 2%, and they say, "Well, they told me it's 5, and there's nothing in writing, there's, you know, he said..." We've gotten to that a couple of times. So, there's definitely some quality issues out there, due to the nature of, you know, so many vendors being out there, and really scrapping for very little commission out there, so you have some people... And that salesman's gone, by the way, the one that promised the 5% is gone.
Has the RFP been decided?
No. We, the, the, Argent Financial helped us put together an RFP.
Second, have you talked to schools that we...
Yes. Ascension Parish, we've talked to Ascension Parish, we've talked to, well, that's, who else have we, we've met? It's been a long time we've been looking at this. Right. Yeah, I know Ascension Parish is satisfied with their, their process and their products.
And their own, they out of, where are they, how?
The consultants, or out of Ruston.
Ruston.
But they would have a limited, they have agreed to be limited. They would come in, do the RFP, they would take the results, they're going to break it down for us, and present it back, and we make a decision, and then that's it for them. And whatever investment provider we pick out of that process, you know, there's a couple of ways you can do it, and they're gonna come and explain the couple of different ways you can do it. You have your investments on one side, and you have your employees on the other. You may have a person in the middle that connects the two. In my opinion, that person needs to work for us, and not the investment providers. And that's gonna be in the RFP, we're gonna say, "We want that person working for us in our interest," because how do you know that they're not gonna recommend the most expensive? We want them, their accountability to be to the employees and to the board.
Mr. Centani, I, I wanna say that, having been in those shoes many times before, and I'm gonna give you two examples, Iberia Parish School Board and Abbeyville General Hospital. Those are two accounts that I was one of many vendors at, in the past, in this capacity. And I spent one year there and didn't return, and it's no offense to those organizations, but I'm gonna tell you, it's tough when you have nine people at different times. So, if I'm the first one on the list, I have a better shot of making a sale, and I stress "a sale," to someone than the ninth person on the list, who may be the MetLife account with only four, you know, participants. Right now, we have 700 participants, out of how many potential participants?
4,500.
Out of 4,500. That's ridiculous, and I know from experience that that is due to the lack of education. You cannot deliver education when you have nine different companies, nine different vendors, selling nine different products, and their job is to make a commission. And so, that's why I asked Mr. Dugah, and Ms. Bernard, and Mr. Guidry, and others, to look into this. It baffled me when I found out we only had 700 participants. Further baffles me to know that we can save, I believe, a minimum of a quarter of a million dollars for the participants, not for the school system. So, when I'm, when I say that, I mean that on behalf of, you know, the folks in the school system. I don't mean that on behalf of the school board, 'cause all we're spending is the consulting fees of the firm that we currently use, which, basically, is just a clearinghouse, they help us with all of the compliance, et cetera. A single-vendor situation, the vendor would take care of all of the compliance. I think education, on the side of the fees, is probably the most important component here. To be able to sit down with someone who does not benefit every time they sell you something, but rather gets paid a fee to manage a plan, very similar to the new consultants that we just heard from tonight, you know, we went through an RFP process. We're asking, I'm gonna ask in a minute, I'm gonna make a motion, to do the same thing we did with, similar to the same thing we did with the health insurance consultant. We go out with an RFP, we get someone who knows what they're talking about to administer that process. They come back with the information, and they tell it to us in basic terms, so we can understand it, and there's no confusion as to what this fee means, or that fee could mean. And as Mr. Dugah suggested, we make a decision based on an institutional level, and not a retail level. Okay? 'Cause right now, there are so many middlemen in this process, that that's what it's become, a sales pitch, and "What can I sell you? I'm gonna see you, I'm gonna be at every school one day a year, so I'm gonna make 42 visits, and then I'm on to the next company, because I have to make a living." If we can get away from that, and turn more to, "What kinda program and process can we put in place, so that you can make good financial decisions?", we're not benefiting every time you put a dollar in this account. That's the type of scenario I'd like to see us go to. Again, very similar, if not identical, to the process we use for the health insurance consultant. So, with that said, I will make a motion that we allow Mr. Dugah and his team, and Ms. Bernard, to get with Argent, that's, that's long. To get with Argent, and come up with an RFP process to administer our 403B plan.
So, I'll second him, but I'll have a few questions about it. So, we would essentially be eliminating eight vendors?
Nine, well.
Because we would be down to one, correct?
Current, yes, yes.
So, I mean, you know, I tend to, I tend to think, if people are paying more in fees, then they must, I'm gonna go ahead and assume that they know what they're getting for their extra fees, right? I mean, that's generally my, my assumption. I'm not, not opposed to the idea that some people don't fully understand what they buy, but, you know, I guess the question I was gonna drive at was, is there a way for us to end up with someone doing the management of the plan, a management of the vendors, almost, where they are very similar to our health insurance, where they vet the third-party administrators, they negotiate with the drug companies? Is there some way to do that while still giving the employees the options? Because there were clearly a couple of different vendors that are very popular with the employees, and as Mr. Muton said, are they, or, yeah, it was her, had said, "Are they still allowed to maintain their relationship?" Well, you know, there's undoubtedly some employees that are very happy with each of those vendors. Maybe not the one with four, I don't know. But I'd certainly like to see some solution, and I guess my question in this RFP process, can we specify it such that we still allow our employees to have this maximum amount of choice, while satisfying our compliance concerns? And, you know, 'cause I wanna save the employees money, too, but if they, if they don't want to, then, you know, that's, that's fine with me, too.
We can put that in the RFP process as one of the options that we've come forward with. As I spoke, TSA had come up with their proposal of taking our current vendors, and putting them on a platform, and trying to control them through that. That's, we can ask them to look at that option. I've already sent them that option to review it, before, just to kinda see what they thought about it. In that situation, you'd have the same vendors, but we would put them on a platform, and try to negotiate down the fees, and negotiate some of the, renegotiate some of the, maybe the things that they're selling. I think some of the employees may not, what, well, what's being sold may be, or say this nicely, more about commission, rather than about return to the employee.
I understand that.
And the employee may not know, in a lot of situations, that they have another choice. So, that is an option we can ask them to look at.
I mean, look, I'm, I'm okay with banning them from the schools, too. I mean, that's fine with me, if they're bothering teachers on their breaks. But certainly, if there is, if there is an opportunity for competition for our employees' dollars, then I think you'll probably find that the companies will naturally regulate their fees themselves, when they find out that, when you go, when an employee goes on the screen and sees nine options, and Option A's fees is, are 5%, and Option B's fees are 2%, well, I think that's gonna naturally select itself, to a certain extent, of course.
In our RFP process, we can present the cost of that option, as opposed to the cost of going with a one vendor. It would be, Option A would be to keep kind of what Steve, TSA is proposing, that we keep the current vendors, put them on a platform, and try to negotiate down their fees, would be one of the options of what the plan should look like. We can have them run that through the results, as to who responds to the RFP, or to stay where we are, and then book out what they think the savings and the cost of that may be, and then, you know, you could, the board can make a decision based on that information.
I'm fine with that, thank you.
Any other questions, sir? Any other comments or questions from the audience? Can, if you don't, I hate to ask you to get up, but would you mind coming to the microphone, ma'am?
I'm just a retiree, thinking about retirees. My point is that I wanna make is, just remember to give people options. I know you wanna put everything in one little bowl, but some people may be happy with what they have, and they know what they have, and they're happy. So, just remember, options.
Thank you very much. With no further comments, call the roll. Ms. Melville, you wanna put it on the screen, or you want us just to?
No.
We're good.
And I guess, to respond to Ms. Carol's comments, the proposal on the one vendor will have many options. Maybe not with these vendors, but right now, basically, you're not giving them much options, but annuities. This will have mutual fund options at perhaps even a lesser price than Fidelity can offer.
Thank you. I was gonna say, seven out of the nine vendors are in our school systems with annuity products. I'm not talking bad about annuity products, but I would say that we don't have many options right now, so thank you for clarifying that.
Two for, none against.
Thank you. Motion carries, and this meeting is adjourned.
All right, we'll take five minutes and let everybody get situated in here.